Very difficult to work remotely. And some of my students are very well, but some are still struggling. It's a real challenge for them and me.
Right.
Other problem is having it in my dining room with my new office. Uh, it's too easy to work seven days a week.
Yes.
Because it's just across the hall from the living room. And then I come in here and check stuff at night and I don't think it's very healthy. So it looks like we're starting to accumulate people.
Yeah.
Where's Crystal?
Yeah, looks like we're recording.
Hello.
Hey.
I'm Kelly Haxma from Greater Chicago Credit Union.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm Kelly Haxma from Greater Chicago Credit Union.
Oh, hi Kelly, I'm Greg Rab, I'm the chairman of the commission.
Hi Greg, I didn't, I didn't realize my video wasn't, sorry.
That's okay. I always like to look at people's backgrounds when they're going to their homes.
I know.
I see Regina.
Hi Greg.
Hi.
I have fish if you want to see those.
What's that?
Behind me is a fish, I think, my fish tank is back there.
Wow, the best thing if we could see it is Regina's table if she still has it, but.
I'm sitting at it.
What's that?
Sitting at the table.
Oh, my favorite table you're sitting in. Regina, Regina's got the best table ever.
Really?
Everybody go to her house and look at it.
That's okay.
If you can find her home, but are you working from home Regina?
I am, yes, I am.
I always had trouble finding you. Not anymore. So look like we have a quorum. Feel like I'm watching the Brady Bunch right now. Why don't you guys start singing?
You don't want me to do that?
Yeah, really.
I mean, that's after my generation, but even I know that show. We got Mike, we got John, we got Regina, we got me. Oh, I'm sorry Jeff, I didn't mean to ignore you. You must have been in your office for the BPU meeting because you got a different background here.
I do, I do.
You're at home?
I am.
Okay.
Testing out new technology.
Well, I don't know how new it is, but it's taken over my life. So I think we have enough for a quorum or am I miscounting?
Um, no, I think we do, we're just missing Jeff Nelson and Tom Nelson. And I believe they're both planning to attend.
Okay. You actually heard from them or?
Yes. Yeah, I checked with Jeff yesterday to make sure he was up and running with uh his Zoom capabilities. And I spoke with Tom last night at the planning commi- or the city council meeting.
Okay, well, unless anybody objects, I'll give them two more minutes.
Sounds good.
This is why I don't want to hold everybody up, I'm sure you have other things to do.
A few.
I'm sure, I'm sort of, sort of caught up right now with school, but not really, but. And one of my cats decided to join the meeting, so. You can't see him, but he bumps up against the computer, he.
I saw an ear.
Well, he doesn't like me being on the computer because I'm not giving him attention, so.
I have that same issue all day long.
Yeah, well, now that I'm home as much as I am, the two of them, I, when we go back to normal, I think they're gonna have separation anxiety.
Yeah.
Because I'm available for naps and feeding and cutting and playing. Then Dan's gonna disappear.
Got somebody?
Let's just give a, oh, it's 3:35. I'll call the meeting to order. So, uh, the first thing on the agenda is the credit union application and we do have a presenter and you want to go ahead Kelly?
I could do, I could do that Kelly if you'd prefer, I could start.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, I've been sober if you're representing us from from Lobello Architects, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can begin to give you kind of the, the overview of what we're doing. We're looking at constructing a 2,300 square foot full service credit union on the site that is bordered by West Fifth Street, Clinton Street, and an alley which is now privately owned and no longer a city street. This will be, uh, you know, a walk-up bank as well as a drive through bank. Our intent is to really make it, it really is a building that has numerous fronts. So we didn't really want to put a backside of them building, we wanted to treat it nicely on all visible sides. We've incorporated some of the stone from the building that we're taking down. We're going to salvage that and use it as accents around the columns in our can, in our entrance canopy, as well as a projecting bay that faces West Fifth Street. So the drive up, the drive-through lane that currently exists there, we're going to maintain that same traffic pattern. So you enter off of Clinton, exit onto West Fifth Street, we'll resurface it, repave it, that sort of thing. We're gonna have 13 parking spots available onsite, including one handicapped accessible, one right by the, the main entrance. There'll be a lot of green space left, there are mature trees on the site that we're going to leave. We're going to plant a few ornamentals and some other landscaping around the existing pylon sign that exists at the corner of West Fifth and Clinton. And Kelly, if there's anything you want to add to that, but that's kind of the outline and summary.
Yeah, that's good.
Before I ask if anybody else has questions or the staff recommendation, anything I was thinking about when I was looking at the plans was you said Martin Alley is no longer a city street, but aren't you showing an exit onto Martin Alley?
You should have received an, a revised site plan that will show that we are no longer doing that.
Okay, yeah, because I'm going off of the old art copy I got quite some time ago.
Right.
Because it was just easier to look at during the course of the meeting.
Yeah, so now we're, we're not connecting at all to the alley. Entering and exiting off of, entering off of Clinton, exiting off of Clinton for the parking lot, exiting through the drive up onto West Fifth Street.
Uh, before I ask if anybody else on the commission has question, Crystal, is there a staff recommendation?
Yes, the staff recommendation is to approve.
Okay.
Except the seeker findings.
I should, I should point out one thing that's probably everybody likes to know and it's an important fact that we will be handling site drainage onsite, we're putting in two catch bases. One in the parking lot, one further out in the lawn so that we can contain the, the, the drainage and that will be piped to the existing storm sewer connection that's near the corner of Clinton and West Fifth Street. And that was something that I reviewed with, with Jeff Lehman.
Great, thank you. Did anybody else have a question? Everybody thinks they're okay?
Yes.
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 All right, well, that was easy. I kind of don't, I don't know what to do now. Could I have a motion to approve the environmental assessment form?
Still moved.
Who was, who moved it please?
Jeff.
Oh, hi Jeff, can I have a second?
A second.
Is that you Mike?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, uh, can I have a motion to approve the site plan?
Still moved.
Thank you Jeff, could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, it's all approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks Adam Kelly.
Thank you.
Thanks Crystal, thanks for your department for all their help.
No problem, we'll see you guys soon.
Bye bye.
Guys have been great, thank you.
Bye.
Take care everyone, bye bye.
Thank you, Crystal, for my signature. Do you want to sign it with your initials next to my name or what do you want to do?
We can do that, do you want to sign, I mean, can, do you have the ability to print that as I sent you?
No, I don't have a printer at home.
Okay, um, you know what I can do is I can print it and, and drop it at your door, you can sign and I can take it.
We can put it in the US mail, we, we still do that, you know.
Do that?
I do it all the time. My mailman appreciates it, we keep them working.
Um, Jen, do you have any thoughts on, on how that should work? For Greg to sign the?
I think either way would be fine, whether you want to bring it to him and drop it or, or through the mail, I think would be fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you. So the next item is the gateway discussion. Who's gonna start that off?
I will do that, hi everyone, my name is Katie Castro. And I'm pleasured to meet many of you who I do not know. I am the chair of the board of directors at Community Helping Hands. So on behalf of our board, of our staff, of our volunteers and of our clients, I want to thank you first and foremost, before I say anything else, for allowing the voice of Community Helping Hands to be heard in this conversation relevant to the Gateway Lofts project. We know that you value our community and the work that we do as an agency. And so we're just so grateful for the opportunity today to be able to talk to you about what the Gateway Lofts project means to us as an agency. How it originated and how we see its opportunity to impact the future of our community. So, thank you. As many of you know.
Can I just interrupt you please?
Absolutely.
Because I don't think we ever met, did we?
No, we have not met before.
Okay, are you the brand new chairperson or have you been there a while or?
I have been there since the beginning of last year, the beginning of 2018.
How did we not bump into each other someplace?
I'm not certain.
Well, I must go to the wrong bars or maybe you don't go to bars, so.
Well, I lived out of the community for a very long time, I'm from.
We're glad they're back.
Me too, glad to be back.
Let, let me just say something before you start. I, I'm delighted to hear about how much and how important this project is to you. Um, and I can only speak for myself as chairman, I don't plan to speak for the whole commission, but you probably are aware that at our last meeting, a decision has been made. Um, and that decision still stands and I don't know if at the end of this discussion, somebody's gonna request some action from us, but there's really nothing we can do. On the other hand, again, I'm more than happy to hear everything you have to say. So I just wanted to put that upfront.
Well, I do appreciate your upfrontness, so thank you for saying that. We are going to be asking for a change in, in that declaration today. But first there's, we have two, we have a couple of other representatives here that you can see on this call. So my particular role today is just to speak for Community Helping Hands and our role in this project and why we are so passionate about continuing to see it move forward in our community and, and really the timely nature of it all, how important it is that we continue to move forward in a timely nature, so.
And, and I don't mean to interrupt you again, but the decision has been made and that's, that's something that can be changed, so. Again, I'm willing to listen to everything you and anyone else has to say, as I have for the last three years. The decision has been made unanimously by the commission, so. I, I don't know what you're gonna ask us to do, but I would say that most likely, because I, this is, while I knew you were coming to discuss with us, no one has let me know unless somehow I lost this in the process of working from home, that indeed we were gonna be asked to take an action because the action's been taken, it's over. But again, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you a second time, so I'll shut up and just listen to what you have to say.
I would love to be able to share that with you. Um, and then like I said, there's some other members from our team that will have some other things to share. But I just really want to make clear our passion for this project and how it originated, because I think so often as we talk about footage and specs and financial tiers and occupancy rates, we lose the vision and heart of the project. And so if you would indulge me for just a few moments, I just want to share with you about the origination of this project.
Take as much time as you want.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So the Gateway Lofts project didn't begin because Community Helping Hands wanted another project or a pat on the back. It was born instead because of the people we serve and because of the people we serve alongside. As many of you know, the majority of our clients, of our work experience participants, of our volunteers and even our staff struggle to find affordable, safe and quality housing in our community. In fact, even currently as we're on this call today, some of our very own staff, we only have five people on staff at Community Helping Hands, and some of our very own staff are currently couch surfing, surfing because their three most recent rentals are now homes condemned by the city. These individuals are individuals who are employed as part-time employees with our agency, who have children and dependents and who cannot thrive without the basic need of their housing, needs being stable, secure and safe. And so as a board at Community Helping Hands, we began to vision, a vision that we believe has been in tandem with God, of housing that would meet that criteria of safe, secure and stable, both for our larger community, for the city of Jamestown, the city we all love, but also for the network that we have forged of clients, of volunteers and staff at Community Helping Hands that all require this. And as we began to dream of what this housing project could look like, we dreamed of collaboration, of diversity and inclusion, of empowerment and of a synergy that we believe that housing projects in our county have yet to see. And thus the Gateway Lofts project was born. Housing projects, of course, but so much more than that. We've worked hard to dream up both up here in theory and words and vision and big descriptive adjectives, as well as down here in specs and drawings and MOUs and funding applications to put together what we believe will provide for individuals and families currently living in the city of Jamestown, the ability to progress along the spectrum of self-sufficiency. I'm kind of a nerd and I love the intersection between leadership strategies, motivation theories and social justice, so. I have to share with you Maslow's hierarchy of needs for just a moment so that you two can dream alongside us of why the Gateway Lofts is so much more than just a housing project. It is a holistic help toward a future with more than just equality. A future of equity with equal opportunity and equal access for individuals and families living in poverty with our city. Maslow's hierarchy is something that I'm sure that you're all familiar with and it contains these all familiar levels and a triangle figure with the bottom being physiological needs, second level safety needs, third level love and belonging, fourth level esteem and fifth self-actualization. Along the lines of physiological needs, the Gateway Lofts project as a baseline will provide shelter to those who need it. And because of the services of St. Susan's and Community Helping Hands, we'll be able to provide food, clothing, furniture and households. On the level of safety, that second level, the project will provide security, access to needed services via caseworkers and other not-for-profit providers that will be in the building and proximate healthcare because of its location in the medical corridor. And then on that third level of love and belonging, perhaps one of the things that Community Helping Hands is best known for is the incredible community, friendship and sense of connection that we provide to all who access our services. In fact, in a recent funding pitch, The United Way, they marveled at our unique ability to empower people because of the belonging that individuals experience when they come into contact with Community Helping Hands. Many of our DSS workers actually end up volunteering or staying with us for years after their initial mandated tenure is long over because they experience a sense of family that they're unwilling to give up on. In fact, when we had to close our operations for COVID-19, it was actually difficult to get our volunteers to agree not to come in. They experience a family. And it's our hope to transfer that same incarnation of family, of community and of belonging from just, from not just the first floor, but into all the floors above it at the Gateway Lofts project. And that fourth level of esteem, which is self-respect, the ability to give back at Community Helping Hands, one of our core beliefs is empowering people to help themselves and to help others. That latter piece to help others is really important to us. And so we consistently invite all individuals who access our services to give back to the community by volunteering alongside us. In many ways, this is how that belonging and sense of loyalty and connection is first fostered. And at the Gateway Lofts project, we will have many nonprofits on the first floor, ourselves included, which will provide volunteer opportunities and ways to give back for the esteemed needs of our residents. And finally, on the tippy-top level of self-actualization or a sense of opportunity, we will continue to operate our workforce development program right there within the building with no transportation barriers and without language barriers, that is, as it is a current priority within our agency to provide services in both Spanish and English to individuals who are ready to take the next step in developing skills for the workforce. They'll be able to complete onsite training, job experience, workshops and access to a workforce coordinator who will be checking in on and encouraging their progress regularly. We intend to level the floor for opportunity and self-actualization. So all of you who are gathered together today on this call, we implore you to ally with us as we seek to be in genuine partnership with the individuals and families in our community who are living in poverty and isolation. Let's give them a hands up together. This is, we believe, the next inner iteration of Community Helping Hands. And it's actually the next iteration of what innovative holistic help could actually look like in our great city. Thank you so much for allowing me to proceed with that, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you Katie for sharing your commitment to the project. I, I certainly appreciate that and I was jotting some things down while you were talking. And I haven't done this ever at a planning commission, but since you had the opportunity to express some of your interests and concerns, I, I I feel the need to talk a little bit about my commitment to housing throughout my entire life. I, I'm past retirement age, although I've chosen to keep working mainly because I enjoy it so much. Except this remote stuff, I'm not too keen on that, but I, I actually miss my students. Many of whom have housing problems. Uh, I have students who couch surf, I have students who've been kicked out of their homes. I have students who live in housing that's inadequate and I worry about it and do what I can to help them all the time. So, uh, I would share your commitment to trying to do what you're trying to do. The only difference between you and me, just looking at your picture, it's clear to me you are considerably younger than I am. I certainly will not inquire as to your age, but you know, I'm 68 years old. Um, and so I've been doing all of this longer than some of you have been alive. And so I'm gonna ask you to just let me say a couple of things, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you, first of all, um, one of the degrees I have is in fact a master's degree in urban planning. From I think the best planning school in the whole country, the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. And while I was there studying for two and a half years, I concentrated on housing. So my whole background is in housing. I went off and did and continue to do other things. But when I graduated in 1978, that's a long time ago. Uh, I spent my two and a half years working there in planning principles in general, but then with a very strong commitment to housing, because at the time I was still living in inner-city Buffalo. I mean, really inner-city Buffalo, not the suburbs, not downtown, not the improved parts, but the, the middle of the city. Uh, and I saw some of the housing conditions there. And my mother owned our own home and it was modest and small, but we kept it up. Uh, although I saw what was happening in the neighborhood, so that was actually why I got into housing, because I had lived it and felt it and understood it, I think, and still do. So then after I got my, my degree, my very first job was as a neighborhood organizer on another inner-city project in Buffalo. And while we were primarily a human services organization, it was called Bailey Delve, and I don't even know if it's still there. But we were a human services organization right in the neighborhood in an old storefront. And one of the things we dealt with on a daily basis was people trying to find adequate housing, this was still late seventies. Sadly, this is not something new, it's something that unfortunately has been going on for a long time. After that, I came down to the southern tier and was the housing specialist under the Appalachian Regional Commission Program for Southern Tier West Development, primarily working in Salamanca. But I lived in Allegheny County because my job was to work with rural communities. Uh, and I did mostly in Allegheny County trying to improve their housing, which if you go into rural areas, it's often even worse than in the cities. Although I did do work in Dunkirk, which did and still does have problems. Became very aware of what was going on in Dunkirk, worked in Ole Miss, uh, worked in Little Village and Dover that most people don't even know exists. But I spent a lot of time there, it's almost outside of the county. After that, I moved up to, I guess I moved up, I went to the west side of Buffalo. Uh, and I was the first executive director and started West Side Neighborhood Housing Services. Uh, and our job was to improve the west side. By the time I left, we were regarded as the most successful of six NHSs and uh, that agency still exists, I'm very proud to say today, improving the lives of people all through the west side. And during all this time, I was, was and continue to be a member of Housing Opportunities Made Equal in Buffalo. Uh, one of the preeminent fair housing organizations in Buffalo. That started in the sixties, I joined in the late seventies. I'm still a member, even though I don't live in Buffalo. I was on the board for a very long time. And because of my service to the organization, I'm officially classified as quote, "a friend" unquote of home by the organization and on their stationery and then recently was asked if, while I'm, because I am considering retiring from Jamestown Community College, if I would start teaching public administration graduate courses in Buff State in this area. I'm not saying this to talk about how wonderful I am, although I kind of like the way I turned out. But I, I've heard stuff through the years in the community that just is appalling. The people have said about me and, and I, and I just, I went through that little review there just to let you know where I'm coming from. That, you know, that's kind of an old-fashioned phrase that I, I don't even like anymore, but my whole background has been trying to help people get better housing. So if anybody's in support of improved housing for the people of Jamestown, it's me. And, and having campaigned for office numerous times for myself, for others. You know, where I won some, I lost some. And I've walked every street in the city and went to homes where sometimes I was appalled at the conditions I saw people living in. But out of respect for them, I knocked on the door and asked for their vote. And there were a lot of people who wouldn't go into certain neighborhoods. And I said, what, are you afraid to see how people in our city actually live? Uh, some people live in pretty abysmal, uh, conditions. And that just fueled my fire and my passion even more. So my commitment, uh, is there Katie, and anybody else who's taking my word at face value. My commitment is there. But also because of being trained as a professional planner, I have an obligation to do the job of the planning commission. But also because of being trained as a professional planner, I have an obligation to do the job of the planning commission. Even when it may be personally uncomfortable. Or even when I may like a project, but it's not in compliance with my understanding of the law. And so. You know, when I was city councilman, I took pressure for. Doing what I thought was right and that came with the territory. But planning commission members are volunteers serving without pay because we care about our community. And I don't like, and I'm not saying you doing this, Katie, because you certainly are not, but when pressures put on us. Or things are said about us, I can only assure you. That everybody on this commission, and we're all different and sometimes we agree and sometimes we disagree, but I think. Everyone here and all the time I was as chairman and I was before I went on council. Has always been committed to do what is best for our community. Because even if we're older, we're going to be here hopefully a lot longer. But we have to do it within the constraints of the planning documents and the New York State Secret Law. We can't do things that the law doesn't allow. So I can love a project and still have to vote against it. And that's very difficult to do, but this commission. And we have. New members, old members. I'm always been very proud of how thoroughly they have taken any project under consideration. Before making a judgment. So I I don't usually do these kinds of speeches at commission meetings. Maybe I've been tied up at home too long and I have a captive audience. But I just wanted to make sure, Katie, because you and I don't know each other very well. Some of the other folks here know me. Actually, I don't think sometimes do know my background. But improving housing has been my life's goal. So emotionally, I'm with you on this project. The question though becomes, can we approve it under the existing plans? And the secret law. And so I think we did our due diligence. In fact, we've been doing this for three years. I've never spent as much time on a project as I have with this. You know, what you just saw with the credit union was a snap. Because sometimes they are. Sometimes delightfully, we can get through them real quickly. And sometimes we can't. And when I think about this project or other decisions I make. Or bodies that I'm the head of make. And I go home at night and I think about it, talking to my cats or laying in bed before I fall asleep. I always have gone to bed with a clear conscience that we did what was right. Even when some people didn't like it and even when some people were often bad-mouthed us. I just said, well, that goes with the job. So. I guess with that, I appreciate you listening to me, but Katie, if you want to ask me a question. I'd be happy to take questions or comments from you. And then I'll turn it over to anyone else who wants to speak, including the members of our commission. But did you have anything for me, Katie?
No, nothing specific, but I would like to say that I hear you and and I appreciate that commitment to housing in our community. And I actually just over the weekend developed a workshop for nonprofits and businesses. On generational synergy, on building generational synergy. And so I love that you brought up our age difference. Because it's something that I think enhances teams and all initiatives. And so. I appreciate you bringing that to light because it's something that adds to the strength of a project. And so we believe in particular that part of what makes the this Gateway Lofts project so compelling. Is the diversity and inclusion component that we hope to capture within it. I don't have anything further, but I would love to turn it over to Steve Ald. Who is here to represent the Gateway Lofts Project as well. So Steve, if you wouldn't mind picking up.
Sure. I I appreciate that, Katie and and Dr. Rab. You know, I hope. I hope that that there is a way that this project can legally go forward, you know, and. Attorneys have talked to me about ways that that could happen. I'm an attorney, but I don't practice, so I'm not coming today with legal advice on how to make it happen. But you know, I I'm assured that there is a path forward. That will allow us to be successful in bringing this project to fruition. I guess I I don't know where to start. I mean, we saw quite a lengthy memo generated yesterday. I guess I'll start with the topic of the ESHI funding. I was raised that that it's only a five-year commitment. Actually, that's kind of unusual in New York State. Most mental health or support service commitments are for one year only. Which for a time was a deterrent for investors to invest in tax credit projects that serve people with disabilities. But you know, over the years, the investors have begun to realize that. New York State doesn't ever withdraw support services once they're funded. It's renewed every five years so that the state has a chance or every year in most cases. So the state has a chance to look at the provider, make sure the provider is still doing a good job. And if the provider is not, they don't remove the funding. They give it to another agency. They ask another agency to step in and take over. So once these beds are funded, they're going to remain funded. For as long as there are people with mental illness that need the services. You know, it's possible that, you know. Come up with a cure for mental illness and then they wouldn't need the funding anymore. But that's the only way that this funding is going to go away is if mental illness goes away. So I I want to reassure everybody, you know, this is not, you know. Something that's going to blow up on us in five years. You know, it's it's this permanent supportive housing. I I might have lost here. What else to to talk about with respect, Katie? Do you remember? Anything else that you wanted or that that you thought would be helpful for me to talk about? Katie, was there anything else that that you thought that I should bring up?
Um, I think it would be great to reference, I think on that document that circulated last night, there was. A point about the quantity of housing that is available currently. In the city of Jamestown, it'd be great to reference the study that was done by G R.
Yes, okay, so. The the market study, of course, we talked about the market study before and how. You have to, the lower your capture rate, it means the the less percentage of the total. Number of people that are available for the units you have to capture in order to fill your building. So the lowest percentage is better. You have to be twenty percent or less to be funded. By the funding agency that we're seeking tax credits from. If you're under ten percent, you're considered to be very, very competitive. We're under four percent our capture rate. So there is a huge demand, off-the-charts demand in Buffalo. And you know, our our, you know. Project will help satisfy that and and it's not going to negatively affect. The other landlords in Jamestown that have quality, affordable housing. Because you know, there's, we're only going to need for less than four percent of the people that are eligible to live there. So there's plenty, you know, ninety-five percent left over for everybody else.
Great. And Steve Rika, did you have anything to add?
If. Yes, I do. And and Dr. Rab, thank you for for your thoughts and and. Background information. No one would. Disagree that your career has been focusing on housing, quality housing and nor would anybody. Challenge your commitment and love for the city of Jamestown, which is well-earned and totally understandable. The more time I spend with the folks in the city and the the people in the community. The more I want to come back. The. Discussions from our perspective, you know, we feel basically. Could be summed up as this project has more benefits than detriments. That the project solves more problems than it creates. And we have a respective respectful professional disagreement nonetheless on certain points. You've referred to the twenty-ten Neighborhood Revitalization Plan as. Something that requires compliance. I tend to look at. The comprehensive plan, the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan and all comprehensive plans. As fluid, organic documents that are subject to change, that are intended to be flexible. And that allow for interpretation. This is the way I look at it. It's the way that. New York State law looks at it. It's the way that your zoning code looks at it. The city of Jamestown zoning code talks about direction and intent. It uses the word compliance, but it says compliance with direction and intent. So from my perspective and from my client's perspective, we've looked at this as a situation where there's wiggle room. To come to a mutually acceptable solution. The focal point of our discussions have almost always centered on the twenty-ten Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. And in fact, on February eighteenth, when there was a vote to adopt a positive declaration. If my recollection serves me correctly, it was on the basis of a perceived not compliance with the twenty-ten. Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. Because of the the differences that we have and the different viewpoints and interpretations we have about what that means and what the law requires. I was surprised by the the vote. I was surprised by the fact that it was the second time that that sort of a vote had occurred. And I was surprised because during the intervening period between the first and the second vote, a lot of stuff happened. Lot of conversations occurred, a lot of information was exchanged. Following the JPC meeting on the eighteenth of February. We didn't just sit back and lose interest in the project. We wondered to ourselves, what could be done to bridge the gap? We we had a meeting on March third. The meeting on March third, I don't think you were there, Dr. Rab. I think you might have had some difficulties with your car, some such thing and. It was however, a very well-intended meeting and that. Involved not only a couple of members of the Jamestown Planning Commission, but also members of the city council, other members of the community, the press. Representatives of Stell Community Helping Hands. And there was a very robust discussion about a whole array of issues. Some of them, from my perspective, were more socio-economic and cultural. Others were urban planning. Others concerned site plan considerations, zoning variances and the like. But what was pretty clear at the end of that meeting, from our perspective. Was that there were issues that we hadn't done a very good job of shedding enough light on. Issues about why this project is different. Issues about why. Expectations and perceptions based on other projects in the city of Jamestown and elsewhere. You know, really shouldn't drive how this project is judged. I've referred to it as a unicorn because it's unique in a number of ways. It's unique not only because of those multi-facets. That it allows and provides in terms of urban revitalization. Environmental remediation, a service-rich environment, all these other things. It's also unique in the sense that it's susceptible, it's very time-sensitive. We've got a bunch of not-for-profit organizations that are working under time sensitivity that makes. The requirement for an environmental impact statement sound like really bad news. And after endeavoring in twenty-nineteen to sort of cut to the chase and maybe. Provide the type of mitigation that we thought the twenty-ten Neighborhood Revitalization Plan called for. We, you know, we find ourselves in a in a position where. We're not exactly sure what our next move should be. I am used to getting, and the law requires written secret determinations. I didn't really press for one because we were focusing more of our efforts since February eighteenth on communication and talking. We know, and I believe, that we've done a good job of putting our best foot forward that. And Larry Scalise can correct me. Among other things, he's gone and looked at other facilities that are developed and operated by Stell. He has issued a summary of his thoughts about that and that. I get the impression he thinks it was a positive experience and that the facilities were clean, well-maintained. To the best of his ability to to see. And and that this was not a situation where Stell was allowing. Its other facilities to fall into disrepair. I also understand that. Two of the more vocal council members who were expressing concerns about the project may have. Altered their perception or opinions on the project. In that, you know, this idea that we're concentrating poverty and stacking. You know, blight upon blight is really not a fair assessment of what we're trying to do. Be that as it may. We were at a at a crossroads right now where we have to. Really know what it is we're being asked to do. With a degree of specificity that allows us to make an intelligent decision. I I think based upon my review of the secret regulations, the case law, conversations with the city corporation council. The idea that the positive declaration cannot lawfully be rescinded, I I just respectfully disagree with it. And I don't want to take up a lot of time having a legal discussion about it, other than to say. I'm confident there's flexibility under the law to do so. I understand that it's not something that. You necessarily want to do, but I don't want to miss an opportunity to say that I think it is something that's possible. And on the head of a pin, it's possible because the regulations don't prohibit it and the D E C guidance. Acknowledges that there could be a change in circumstances and information. That lets you change your mind. And what the law requires you to do is explain why you did it. Just like the law requires that a determination of significance be set forth in written form with a reasoned elaboration and. Reference to supporting documentation. I could have started to prepare a draft environmental impact statement, but I wasn't quite sure what the scope of it would be. Sure, I heard a verbal vote on February eighteenth. And that vote focused on the twenty-ten Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. I then noticed in the press that there were conversations about other things that should be addressed in the environmental impact statement. And that possibility seems to be reinforced by the the outline of issues that we received late last night. Which cover a pretty wide waterfront. So if this is a situation where the. Exercise of preparing environmental impact statement by my client. And it's not-for-profit partners is going to require an inordinate amount of resources and time. That really just, if we're all trying to accomplish quality housing in the city of Jamestown. And if we are going to be sensitive to the time constraints that these funding procedures demand. We're not meeting our mutual best interests. I think that. The project is also unique and different in a very significant way under the law. I've mentioned it before. I haven't dwelled on it too much. I've been focusing most of my efforts on trying to figure out. How we can better highlight the overriding benefits of this project and less on. Lawyer-ing, frankly. But it's an inescapable truth that approximately half of the people who are going to live in this facility. Have special needs, substance abuse issues, mental health issues. These are folks that always have a hard time finding housing. These are people who not only have limited financial means and often tragic backgrounds. But they're quite often susceptible to a community attitude that, you know. Just not here. Let's just not do this here. This is something that echoes in my brain, in my practice. All the time. And I may not be sixty-eight, but I'm fifty-eight and you see an awful lot in thirty years of legal practice. So what what I would suggest is that. We've made compromises. We have been respectful. Have we disagreed? Yes, we have. Have we gotten frustrated at times? Absolutely. But you know, when I look at situations like this and I look at the protected status of people with disabilities. But, you know, when I look at situations like this and I look at the protected status of people with disabilities, I see under, you know, the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Rehabilitation Act, other federal statutes that to the extent that we're required to mitigate and, and make reasonable accommodations, municipalities have an obligation too. Municipalities need to reasonably accommodate people in these protected categories. Now here, that should not be a bitter pill. That should be something that we both embrace. You know, I, I was struggling to find a model. How do I mitigate this project? How do I, how do I comply with the 2010 plan? What, what, what form of mitigation does that take? I'm pretty sure I've heard from Chairman Rab and others that it doesn't mean you have to do a one-to-one demolition of buildings for every unit that you construct. What, what it does mean however, is that, you know, we, we share a common goal in not only preventing this property from falling into disrepair and itself becoming blight, but in, in making sure that there's a stable, stable neighborhood around it. And we are more than willing and have been to enter into a mutually acceptable mitigation plan that would really be the end result of the environmental impact statement process. So I guess if there's something that we're asking for today, and I think Chairman Rab has already given me an answer to part of it, it's that I think we would either, we would prefer that the Jamestown Planning Commission rescind its positive declaration and are confident that it's legally permissible to do so. Not only because I think there's new information that's been brought to light, but good people, Community Helping Hands, in consultation with city leaders and planning, a planning director, Certic. But also frankly, because if you, one can easily reexamine the SEACER regulations and come to the conclusion that, and, and we can get into this in any degree of detail later, although it's probably best if I do so with the city corp council's office. There's a very strong argument to be made that this project, in fact, is a type-two action that's exempt under SEACER. It's an argument I've made in the past. It's, it's one based upon changes in the law that occurred within the past year or so. And I, I think it's more than worth closer examination, particularly since it could lead to us all arriving at a, a, a very positive result. If however, the Jamestown Planning Commission is, does not want to go that route, is not willing to consider rescinding its positive declaration, I, I think it's fair and reasonable and frankly, our entitlement under SEACER for the city to issue to us a written determination of significance so that we can respond to it, so to know what it is we're responding to. You know, the next step would be to do scoping and determine what the table of contents of that document would look like, if you will. From our perspective, based upon the verbal pos deck in February of this year, really the only issue should be, how do we maintain consistency with the 2010 Neighborhood Revitalization Plan? It should really be the centerpiece of the document. That shouldn't be something that leads to, you know, endless public meetings and hearings and exchange of paper. I, I mentioned before, I had a hard time finding a model for what that mitigation would look like. And that's because I don't believe there is one. I don't believe, and it's my understanding, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that there has not been new quality affordable housing built in the city of Jamestown since the 2010 Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. Over the past decade, I am not aware of a model that would guide us moving forward. So in conclusion, I would submit to you that we would respectfully request that you either rescind the positive declaration and allow us to devote all our resources on a robust mitigation plan, or very promptly issue to us a written determination of significance so that we can make intelligent decisions about how we want to move forward. And those decisions will include decisions that we make in consultation with the city corporation council's office, because I have a legal obligation to do my job too. I have to protect the rights and interests of my client, including those that are protected under federal anti-discrimination statutes. So I guess that's really what I have to say.
I, I, I'm reminded by your comments, Steve, of the, the sense of urgency that I wanted to communicate to the board. We are, there's, we're, as you're aware of, there's a significant environmental contamination on the property. Significant, it's a significant threat to, to health if it's not cleaned up. The DEC is being patient with us because they're aware of our projected timelines. They, they check with us, you know, ask us what our timeline is, when we're going to start construction. And, and we can tell them, you know, the funding agency is scheduling us for closing in September or October of this year. They're patient then, you know, if they hear that the funding agency has taken us off their schedule because of a positive declaration, you know, and the delay that that would mean, the DEC, one of their options is to come in and clean it up themselves. They would remove all of the tenants. You know, St. Susan's would be removed, Community Helping Hands would be removed. The DEC will clean it up. They'll pay for the cleanup. They'll put a lien against the property. Nobody will be able to use Brownfield tax credits on the property. Instead of being more valuable to a developer because of the Brownfield tax credits, it'll be extremely expensive to take on this property because before you did anything with the property to improve the condition of it, you would have to pay off the DEC lien. So if, if we delay too much here, the DEC is going to lean this property and it's going to stay on vacant until the building falls in on itself. And, and that's happening right now in the village of Silver Creek, Silver Creek School. Stell and Code, Code before Stell, both tried to get the Silver Creek School funded and rehabilitated. It was unsuccessful. And now the, the building, it's going to estimate it costs over a million dollars to tear it down. Silver Creek doesn't have a million dollars. The county doesn't want to do it, you know, so it's just falling in on itself. I'd hate that to happen to Jamestown and this building. And other reasons why delay are, are bad for us, I mean, Community Helping Hands can only stay around so long, funding the, the maintenance upkeep of this building. It's, it's terribly expensive. They need, you know, I mean, it's, it's mostly vacant right now and they, it needs to be used in order to be, you know, an efficiently-run building. Finally, I just would mention, you know, the longer we delay, things, things are starting to impact us like in January of this year, we lost 20% of the value of the tax credits that will be coming to us because we're putting the solar panels on the roof. So now, now that's looking like it might, you know, be less likely to be affordable to us because we're not going to get the same value that we thought. And in January of 2021, another 20% or so of the value of the tax credits will disappear. You know, the solar incentives are going away. So, you know, that's, those are just a couple of things that are, are pushing us to like, hopefully get this positive declaration rescinded, rather than try and, you know, produce an EIS and, and go down that road.
Thank you for that, Steve. I don't know if you can hear me. I know Crystal and I had done a lot of work on this in the upcoming weeks. I know Crystal had some things to say, not to put her on the spot unless she wanted me to speak to those.
I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to, so if you wanted what you had in mind.
You know, I, I'm sorry. My name is Ali Ramada. I'm the corporation counsel since you know, I, I discussed with the mayor and Chris to some extent, the procedure for how this could possibly be, we worked on. We had looked at the plan when it first came along and Stell had worked us with some of those criticisms that had come about in the, in the prior sessions to try to mitigate those. I won't speak, speak to those concerns right now. But I believe we thought on a procedural aspect that if Community Helping Hands and Stell can rescind their application and then resubmit it at another planning board commission meeting after some of those be need for the positive declaration from the last meeting, and there can be some sort of rhetoric being worked out.
I didn't, some of you, you got cut out on that a little bit, but I, I think what I heard you saying is that rather than rescind, in effect, they would withdraw the application and resubmit it with the new information. Is that the way I heard you say it, or?
Yes.
Well, because that, that's the way I've always understood it. Both as a planner and like Steve, I, I have my law degree and I teach a lot. I do a lot of work on it, but I don't practice. So that was my understanding of the way that it would be handled. So.
We're willing to do that.
Yeah, that would be, that would be, I think, just as, as quick as anything.
I, I need to exercise caution on this because I don't know if anybody else for the project wants to speak. And I certainly have spoken a lot, but you know, I'm just the chairman. I don't, I don't make the decisions. I have a vote, obviously. But we have other members of this commission that I think would like to speak or ask questions unless you've got something else you wanted to add in here.
Sure. One, one more thing, Dr. Rab. The, the mitigation plan is very flexible. I just wanted to point that out. And maybe that's something that we would resubmit as, as a new mitigation plan. We, I think it was John Lemoncousso that brought up the possibility of instead of finding houses to demolish and remove from the market, we would invest in housing that needed some minor repairs to make it habitable or more habitable, more bring it up to code, that kind of thing. Stop it from being one of the houses that needs to be demolished in, in Jamestown. So that's, that's a change to the mitigation plan that we would be very open to doing that. I mean, I have no objections at all. I mean, it sounds like a very good idea to me.
Okay. Well, with that, I would invite other members of the commission, including our city council liaison, to ask comment, excuse me, ask questions or make comments.
Well, I guess just a couple of comments from me. Again, I'm only the liaison. And, but I am the councilman from the sixth ward, so it's in my ward, so I care, I guess, very, you know, deeply about the project and it's been, I don't know, three, maybe three years in the making, I think. And first I had, I was excited about it, then I had questions and some doubts and concerns, and I feel like they've been answered and I, I, and I really support the project now. I, I, you know, have a great deal of respect Greg for your opinion on this. And as chairman, I know you have a lot more experience than, than I do in these matters, but I'm just, I'm kind of just a spectator in this and I, I, you know, I'm a, and I think any way that it can happen, and I'm looking at, I don't know, about six attorneys, so I'll, I'll let them figure out how that it's supposed to happen, but, but I'm, as a, as a councilman from the sixth ward, I do support this.
Well, and Tom, you're, since it's in your ward, I always take that very seriously when someone has a project that's going to be in their ward, speaks up about it pro or con, so your comments are well-received and taken very seriously. So that, not that we make political decisions because of the way we have the planning commission up, set up, at least in our city, is we're sort of immune from political considerations, although given that this is a small town, lots of us, for lots of reasons, are involved in politics. We're supposed to keep it out of that. But I, I realize you're speaking as the, the person chosen by the people in your ward to represent the best interest of the ward, and I know you do that. I appreciate that. Can I hear from commission members with questions or comments?
I would like to make one if I can.
Sure.
I'm Jeff Nelson. I'm not showing up in the pictures, but I, I think with the name, you know, you remember who I am. But in any event though, I like, for the most part, I really like the project. I like its intent, what is being done, the way it's been proposed is, I think, good. It's a positive for the community in, in many ways. It's a negative also in some ways, I think. But there's not a way to immediately fix it and take a better route. It might be, I think, a, a better situation for families. I tend to feel strongly that families should be living out in an area where there's other families, diverse families, if you will, where the kids, I shouldn't say it that way, but I've always called my own kids, kids. But the children can mix well with others. And I don't mean just at the time they might spend in school, but it's times of things that go on in the neighborhoods. So I like the idea of neighborhood housing in, as well as it can work with lower-income people and middle-income people and upper limit income people, because you never really know how the kids all working together can affect each other in a way that may bring those who are less or disadvantaged in some way up to a higher level by the time they come out of high school, not doing just what they do in school, but because there's other ways in which they associate with each other that is a positive for their future growth. At the same time, there aren't any other plans like that that are out in the field, if you will. And I know that there's the desire to fill up the space. I don't disagree what's being done. I only have this other reservation. And I think if there's things that can be done to advance the project, we should probably take that pass because I do think the housing is needed. So that's kind of where I stand.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other commission members want to weigh in on this with questions or comments?
If, if I could say a couple of things, Greg?
Sure, John.
All right. Well, Katie, it's nice meeting you. Thanks for joining us. I'm not sure if this is your first meeting, but it's, it's nice meeting you and, and thank you for being here. I just want to echo Greg's comments a little bit about housing and, and everyone on the commission. I think that, I don't think any of us take the issue of affordable housing in the city lightly. I don't think any of us are unsympathetic to that concern. It's something that I'm, I'm very concerned about and I know others are too, quality affordable housing. And I think it's critically important to the, to the future of the city. So, you know, if you or anyone else interpreted our decision from February as us being opposed to the project in general and not liking the project, I don't think that's the case at all. And, and I also wanted to say, I, I read the letter and thank you for doing the letter. I thought the letter was really well-written. And it, and it sets forth a lot of important information about the project. It's a good summary. It also answers, answers a couple, several important questions about, about the, the project. So thank you to you, Katie and Sean and Steve, I think, who put the letter together. But in any event, I also wanted to say that at least personally, I don't appreciate the suggestion that the planning commission is voting to delay anything. The planning commission is not voting to delay this project. We had an obligation at our last, at our meeting in February to consider New York state law, which we, we all talk about as SEACRA. And we had a recommendation from the planning department to issue a positive declaration and, and we all carefully considered that and, and that's what we did. We didn't vote to delay this project or disapprove this project. We, we tried to follow the law as best we could and, and made a, a positive declaration on a, on an application where, you know, I think the applicant itself has admitted that this is a type-one, type-one project, even though there's been, I, I think Steve mentioned otherwise earlier, but I think that, I, I thought I read correspondence where the applicant was acknowledging that this was a type- acknowledging that this was a type one, uh, action under, under SECR where, where it's more likely that there's a, uh, there's the possibility of a significant environmental impact. So those are just a few of the things that I wanted to say, Greg. I also wanted to talk a, a little bit about what Steve said. Um, I think, I, I, I agree with Steve. I think that the, uh, mitigation is probably better done as a fund, perhaps not much different from the community, uh, the JRC community, uh, development, um, uh, block grants that have been done over the years. I think that program has invested around, I think I read nine hundred thousand dollars in city neighborhoods, which is fantastic. And I think there was a review done by CZB in two thousand seventeen of that particular program. And I think CZV, CZB, their analysis showed that it was a success and it truly did help some of the neighborhoods reduce blight and encourage investment. So, um, I think, I, I agree with Steve. I think that instead of uh, having a mitigation fund set aside for demolishing properties, I think that those monies would, would better mitigate the adverse effects of this particular project by, you know, being, being included in some sort of neighborhood revitalization, uh, matching grant program, uh, like the, the JRC has done over the years. Uh, so I just wanted to touch upon, uh, that as well, Greg. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, John.
Uh, Dr. Rab, could I, uh, Chairman Rab, could I, I just wanted to respond to one point, uh, that, uh, Mr. Lemon, who so brought up, that was that the, the letter that we produced said that, that the commit, planning commission voted to delay. That's, that's on me, that I, that was my idea to say that because Steve Rick had written up about a two paragraph legal explanation of what happened and why, and i- in, it was just two paragraphs of legalese that was starting out the letter. And I thought, nobody's going to read this, okay? They're going to get halfway through this legalese and that's it. They're going to throw it away. So I just summed it up by saying, um, we've been delayed, you know, and I, I thought that was accurate because I mean, if we do an environmental impact statement, it's going to involve a lot of time a- and possibly kill the project. So, um, and I just was like, I, I apologize if that was offensive, but that's on me that I sh- I, I shorthanded it. So that, uh, everybody wouldn't just throw away the letter.
That's okay. I, if I may, Greg, uh, you know, I think, I have a thick skin and I think Greg does too, and, and a lot of us do, so, you know, nobody should be too concerned about me being offended. I just, I just felt like, you know, like Greg said, we're volunteering. We're trying to do the best we possibly can for the city and do what's right for the residents. And so the idea that we're, you know, just turning down this project because of some personal beliefs or we want to delay this thing so that it, it dies on the vine, as I think has been said before, is just not true. You know, I think we're trying our best. And I'm glad you brought up that, the, the idea of, of delay, of delay and the EIS because I, I wanted to ask, how long do you, do you think this process is going to take? Because I, I think it's been said now for many months and multiple times that the project may not be able to go forward if you have to do an EIS. How long will that take? Is it not something that could be done in a month or two?
Well, you, you want me to address that, John?
Yeah, whoever would like to.
Okay, so environmental lawyers generally use as a rule of thumb, six to nine months as an optimistic time period. And here's why. Is, as everybody, as Dr. Rab certainly knows, you, you basically boil down to its key components. You have a draft environmental impact statement and a final environmental impact statement. Um, under the regulations as they're currently written, you can't just go ahead and prepare a draft environmental impact statement and submit it for public review. You have to have a public scoping session. So, when I say, you know, if, if we cannot avoid doing an environmental impact statement, and if that's something that both the JPC is going to require and that we're going to, you know, acquiesce to. Uh, and by the way, it is something under the regs technically that it's sort of like the joint responsibility of the lead agency or the applicant. In practice, the applicant prepares a draft, submits it to the city. But before they do that, you submit a proposed scope. Then you have to hold a proposed public meeting on that and people comment on the proposed scope. And, you know, be given the realities of public meetings and the fact that people are non-lawyers and people are laypeople and people have different perspectives, it ends up being a very long sort of a public hearing situation where they wouldn't probably look too much different from the very lengthy and detailed public hearing we had in the fall of twenty eighteen. Once you do that, you know, there's, so there's some finagling of what the draft environmental impact statement looks presented. Then you have to have a public comment period that's at least sixty days long, although that varies based upon when you have the hearing and when you close the public comment period and so on and so forth. So, you know, the six to nine month period generally uh, can be explained by virtue of the transactional costs and time to put together the scope and then enlist an environmental consultant to prepare the draft environmental impact statement, then that's subject to a public hearing. Uh, once, once that public hearing occurs and all the comments are received, they have to be, uh, basically, uh, digested, organized and responded to in a fire, final environmental impact statement. And if all goes well and everything happens perfectly, you know, that right there, it just tends to be a six month long period. Now, because I still have questions in my mind as to what environmental impact statement will be mutually satisfactory. Uh, because I don't know the exact scope of it, because I don't know whether we're going to be, you know, called upon to address, you know, a bunch of, uh, very complex societal economic things. Uh, you know, I, I suspect there'd be some discussion about that. So I, I guess without getting any further into the weeds, I would just say that it is certainly not something that can be done within a month. It would be highly unusual to have it be completed in even three months. Uh, and, and I've certainly been involved in environmental impact statement processes that have gone on for years by virtue of supplemental environmental impact statements, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, I, uh, we're not lazy. We don't, we're not afraid of doing, uh, study. Um, but frankly, to some extent, I feel like our draft environmental impact statement might end up looking a lot like a repackaged version of all the stuff we've, you know, to the extent that we've been trying to focus on not just the twenty ten neighborhood revitalization plan, but all of the available plans that are posted on the city website and think we have done so. We thought we were kind of getting to the same result in a different way. So, you know, maybe too much information, but certainly not a month, certainly not three months would be a blazing fast timeline for an EIS. So it's just, I, I'd ra- I'd rather we spend our time and limited resources on working out, uh, something we can all be proud of and, and not burden you and your staff and, uh, you know, my not-for-profit client and its partners with more hearings. I, I think we've pretty fully discussed the project in a public forum on so many occasions that, I, I, I think we could do an intelligent job of developing mitigation uh, in, in a different way. And if it means withdrawing the application, uh, and resubmiting, that would be wonderful. Um, we certainly don't want to, you know, have the, have a third positive declaration as a result at the end of that. So, you know, in a perfect world, uh, we might have an agreement in principle that the objective of a withdrawal of our application and a resubmission would be to focus all of our efforts on developing, uh, neighborhood stabilization fund that, uh, is, you know, is as successful as the CZB uh, project, the, the one that CZB wrote about.
The JRC Neighborhood Block Challenge.
Now, we have put numbers on the table. Uh, we've, we've, uh, you know, we, 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 I, I think expressed the, the concern that, you know, when we first presented our proposal and the number was three hundred fifty thousand dollars, that was a long time ago. Spending, you know, e- everybody's been working hard to try to come to a resolution and, and the, and the funding situation hasn't really gotten better and our resources haven't gotten greater. Things have been going down. So, it, you know, we, we would want to stick to, you know, the essential parameters of, of what we were talking about and would hope that it would just, that the focus would be on shaping it into the, a form that suits your purposes more closely.
Can I just say something here?
Sure.
I think something that has been probably at the, the top sort of priority in a lot of different conversations that, that I've been a part of um, with planning commission members, with the housing committee members, um, and, and with the folks from the Gateway Team. Neighborhood stabilization is, I, I think something that we're all very concerned about. And we, we are talking about the mitigation plan. Steve Ald, um, can you talk to us a little bit more about Stell's sort of long-term plans in the city that, you know, is in addition to this specific neighborhood stabilization fund that we, we've all talked about as being part of this mitigation plan? Um, can you talk about what that other long-term vision is and, and, and your, your, where you are in terms of that and how that actually plays into what, um, what this mitigation plan looks like? Uh, I think that it's something that I don't know that everyone on the planning commission has, has heard anything about it. I really only started to hear some details about it very recently. So I think that it's something that's important for, for everyone to hear about because, um, you know, it's, even though it's not necessarily part of this project, it's something that from Stell's perspective, um, adds to this project in, in sort of a, when we're talking about neighborhood stabilization in, in a way that we haven't really been able to connect those dots yet. And I think that that's something that we need to be able to do.
Okay. Yeah. So, um, what, wh- one of the things that we were thinking about would be, uh, when we demo a house, uh, we would take, we would taste, remain ownership of that piece of property that the house was on and then uh, build new housing where we've demoed old housing. This is something that we're doing right now in the city of Dunkirk. Uh, with, in conjunction with the Chicago County Land Bank, just like we're proposing here. Um, we, uh, took a lot of vacant lots. We took a lot of houses that, um, we thought we could rehabilitate the houses at first. Uh, it turns out it's way more expensive to rehabilitate a house than it is to simply demo and build a new one. Uh, when you have to have the, the super high energy efficiency levels that are required by, uh, the source of funding that we use. So, um, our plan was to, uh, use this opportunity to acquire a, a number of lots in the city of Jamestown. Um, eh, my executive director, Tom Whitney, talked to your mayor uh, about where he would like us to do that. And, uh, what, what I hear they talked about was to do it on Route sixty on Main Street as you're coming in. Try and find as many vacant lots there and, and uh, houses that are in bad shape there on Main Street. Demo those and build new houses. It's called infill housing. That's, uh, you know, what we would hope to do, be the, the next step after we, you know, after we use our money to buy these houses and demo them, the next step would be to, to build new ones in their place.
Uh, Steve, and I know this is separate from what we're trying to do today, but, um, the only thing I would say about that, which I think is a good idea, uh, if you can do that, it, I know some people are worried because Main Street, Main Street doesn't look nice enough. But for people who come into the city, but if you go down the numbered streets between, um, Maine and Washington, one of my concerns is, except for a few streets, there's a couple of exceptions there. The housing on those streets is, makes Main Street look perfect. And so, um, I worry about the people who live in some of those houses. It's really quite frightening. I would, you know, if this goes any forward, I would just suggest, because I have no other power, to suggest looking at some sites on those numbered streets where things are really bad, but on the other hand, in some of those numbered streets, there's actually functioning communities of poor people who are doing the best they can. And I, you know, I, I campaigned on those streets so many times. Uh, and you could, you can very quickly realize which streets, even though they look bad, could really get a boost if one or two of the houses was torn down and new ones were built. It would suddenly, it would have a magic transformation, which should actually be stronger than Main Street. I, I have no problem with making Main Street look nicer for visitors. But I've consistently worried more about the folks who live on the numbered streets and sometimes dangerous conditions, even though there are some really interesting functioning communities down there where people help each other and get along and, um, ev- every time I show up sometimes in some of the neighborhoods, although they are, most of the folks down there know me now. They get nervous that this white guy is wandering down in the neighborhood, but I, I make a practice of going everywhere. As long as you say hello to people, everybody's friendly. Many, even the drug dealers are friendly, so, at least to me, but.
I agree that that's a, an area of the city that's ripe for development. Uh, I'm, I'm very much attracted to that particular area of Jamestown because, you know, what mo- what did, what most developers run away from, that's what I like because, you know, the, the, the more, more deplorable the conditions are, the easier it is to, to get the funding to do it, you know?
Right.
Yeah. So I, I had already looked at the numbered streets, um, as a, as a source uh, for a lot of vacant lots. There's a lot of vacant lots down there and, and also some really dilapidated houses, unoccupied sometimes, you know? So those are, those are gold to us.
Glad to hear that. Um, now, uh, I don't want to put you on the spot, Mike, but I know you had some strong, uh, opinions about um, the Gateway Project. And I, again, I'm not putting you on the spot, but I want to make sure you have a chance to.
Yeah, I guess my, um, you know, my over, my general concerns are, are, are still, you know, the need for more housing. And if we develop that housing, even though it's going to be superior housing, like we, you know, we talked about, and the housing is going to be really nice. You know, is that going to have any effects on the current housing, the current vacancy rates and, and what is going to happen to, to those properties? You know, it's not, I mean, I think you're, the project that you're proposing is, is tremendous. Um, and there's a lot of support for everyone who's going to be living there as well as everyone in the community. But it's just those, you know, those secondary effects of what's going to happen um, to our current housing stock in conjunction with population decline and looking ten or fifteen years down the road. You know, are we going to have an increase in vacancy rates, um, even without this project? Uh, let alone adding another, you know, hundred or forty-four units, I, I guess, is what potentially could be taken from the current community? And then the other is going to be occupied by homeless, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
So that's just my, my general concerns for that. Um, and we certainly have, you know, a lot of social programming here trying to help the residents who are in Jamestown. And adding this project, I don't think there's going to be a strong increase in what they are currently doing. Um, I think they're doing a, a really good job and doing everything that they can. Um, so just adding another venue, you know, may make some of it more accessible, but it may also make others less accessible to those, um, services. So that's just sort of my general thoughts right now.
Thanks, thank you.
A comment, if I might.
Sure.
I think Mike's on a good track with what he's, what he's saying and the idea of doing something on those side streets. The numbered streets, if you will, instead of on the main streets is a, a good thing. We do have a lot of excess housing in the city. If you think about it in the terms of having very old houses built in old neighborhoods to fit old or, or what do I want to say, conditions that disappeared a long time ago. There are a lot of houses that could come down and lots could be split, if you will, to adjoining houses. Increase the lot sizes and may very well increase the value of housing in the area. And that would be good. Another aspect of it. So, there are things that have to be done in a lot of other existing neighborhoods besides close by where the project is or even on Main Street.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Mind if I just address Mike?
Mind if I just address Mike and Jeff's comments briefly? Hi, everyone. Um, I've been kind of the quiet presence on the call. Um, but I started three years ago with this project. And I'm still very much a passionate advocate for it and trying to support the Stalin community helping hands in this. And Mike, I really wish Marie was on the call because I think what's important about that vacancy rate. Is that there is a vacancy with studio apartments. For example, if you look at. You know, studio apartments, they have a pretty high vacancy rate. Um, but I don't know that there's necessarily housing for people who are disabled, which is why I wish Marie was on the call. And this is, you know, all of it handicapped accessible for anyone who's disabled, no need to build a ramp on an old house. Um, and so that, again, that, that sort of narrative that there's too much housing. And there's a vacancy is, is not really borne out by both the statistical evidence and also the anecdotal evidence. That many, many agencies that I work with now at United Way see and, and I've heard on no- numbers, numerous occasions from. You know, the Anew Center, which deals with victims of domestic violence. With the U Can City Mission, with the Y W C A and their transitional housing for women and children. That people are staying longer in shelter, particularly families, because their, their case managers cannot find them. Housing. And Katie's husband also works for the County Department of Mental Hygiene. And he works with the homeless population and he has the same sort of both statistical evidence and stories that. While some of us think there's so much vacancy, there truly is not when you're looking for affordable and quality housing. For people who don't have many other options. So I just, I feel like that's just an important thing to address. From the standpoint of somebody who has worked with many of these agencies and seen the data that they've submitted to us. And then Jeff, I wanted to say one thing about your comment, which I very much appreciated when you were talking about, you know. People of different socioeconomic means and children like building relationships with each other. If you actually look at the income levels in these apartments, so set aside the permanent supportive housing piece of it. And just the affordable housing, if you look at a three-bedroom, that's the, the maximum income is forty thousand do- dollars. So you're going to have working families and we've been talking a lot about essential workers and grocery store workers and people who work at Walmart. They do not make this much in a year and they are working full-time at minimum wage. Some of them. And so I fully suspect that there are going to be, you know. Yes, people in public assistance, there's no doubt that will be some of the residents of this project. But people who are working hard to better their families and better their lives and they're going to be living here too. And, you know, again, in this community, forty thousand dollars is, is still very much the working poor. But people who are working full-time jobs. And I just, I, I think it's important to kind of note that because I think we get this sense sometimes that it's just people on public assistance or in need of services. That will be living here and it's not. It's working families that have struggled to find quality housing. Um, for many years and some of us on this call, Greg included with his students. Have long-term relationships with these people who need, you know, who need this, this kind of opportunity set before them. So that's all I'll say about that. Just, I just feel like it's important to note that that vacancy thing is not, it's not really. A reality.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome. Thanks for letting me speak.
Well, uh, I'm checking the time here and I appreciate all the time that you have given. Everybody here who's in on the call. Let, let me see if I can summarize where I think. At least as the chairman, I stand and, um. Go from there. When I look back at the vote back in February. The vote of, coming up with, you know, the positive declaration did hinge as so many of you discussed the mitigation plan. Now, the mitigation plan, uh, is something that comes out of the neighborhood plan. I think what I've heard this afternoon, and all of you can correct me if I'm wrong. Is that there seems to be on the part of the sponsors, uh, a flexibility. About how we handle this along some of the lines that were suggested that John talked about and others. I think, um. You know, rescinding is, for me, is not an option. I think the idea of withdrawing it. And putting in the application with the new information, which hinges on the mitigation plan is the key that I think. And again, I can't speak for everybody on the commission, people are likely to go along with, but, um. We would need to move on that mitigation plan discussion very quickly. The only thing I would ask, um, is that. You know, especially now that I'm working remotely from home and don't have a class, a class schedule. Um, that I'd be involved in any of those discussions and anybody else from the commission who might want to be without violating the open meetings law. Because I, I, I need to, um, if I'm going to come into the meeting. And hear from the staff that with this new mitigation plan, they're recommending approval on the third application. I'd like to be able to go into that meeting as the chairman going along with that, but I can't go along with that unless. You keep me involved all the way through and anyone else who would want to join with us. So. Uh, that would be my recommendation to the commission, um, and. You know, I'll leave it open now for anybody else who might want to comment.
I'm going to grab if I could. I know under the sixty-one dash twelve of the mission, rules. You can call special meets as well as two members of the commission to facilitate this problem. If I could just add information.
I, you get, always get chopped up there, Elliot. Uh, can you, can you do that again, please?
You have the power to call special meetings to discuss this as well as two members of the commission. So I just.
You said, not, not a meeting of the commission, just a special meeting involving me and two other commission members? Okay, then I, I understand what you're saying, Elliot. Thank you. Well, and that, that would be fine with me. Um, but again. I'm putting that out there first, especially for the commission. And then secondly, for everyone who has an interest in the project, regardless of what your interest is.
If I could just say a couple more things, Greg?
Sure, John.
Okay, um. I know, I, everybody in this room is, is very interested in making sure we have quality affordable housing in the city. And I think that. You know, by all accounts, it sounds like the units that Steve and Steve and, and Katie and everyone are looking to build are going to be great. Uh, but I think at the same time, if we're, if we're concerned about quality affordable housing. We also have to be thinking about the people. Uh, who may be in need of affordable housing in our community, who are not going to be able to live in this beautiful building. Who are not going to be one of the few that are able to live there and. You know, given that. The, the, let's assume that the project gets built. I don't think anybody can dispute that there's going to be. A resulting reduction in demand for the, uh, the, the affordable housing that's already in this community. And so my thought with that is. All of a sudden, property owners in the city who own affordable housing units. Have less money to invest in those units, thereby causing that housing that was affordable. That is affordable to be of a lesser quality. And, and so maybe the land, the property owner is putting less money into that particular property. Because there's less demand to rent that property. So. Does it, doesn't that make it worse for some others in our community who are, who are living in affordable housing? Um, and, and not one of the fortunate ones to get into this new building. Uh, I just wanted to, to say that because I think it bears mentioning.
I, I think that's a great point, John, but what I was hoping and, you, you know, you certainly comment on this, that. The reworked mitigation plan would be designed to address some of the very issues that you brought up.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to make sure I said that.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that and, and I think you've got a valid point.
Talking about the mitigation though, Greg, specifically, I know that you want to move things along. Uh, as far as the mitigation plan goes, I thought that, and everybody can disagree or agree on the commission, but. My thought with regard to the mitigation plan was perhaps we would. Uh, I don't know if we need to talk to property managers or realtors or who, who Steve, uh, uh, and company might. Uh, want to reach out to in this regard, but it may make sense to think about. Uh, how much of a reduction in rental income this project might cause. For other rental properties in the city and kind of, kind of come up with some kind of formula where we can. Uh, you know, have a, a reasonable estimate of the amount of investment in. Uh, affordable housing in the community that this may cause to be reduced and, and work off of that. When we're deciding how, how, you know, how, how much in, uh, you know, in mitigation funds should be set aside to mitigate. The, the adverse effects.
Yeah, uh, the, the way I see it, and thank you for that comment, is that the mitigation plan, however we finally structured this. Given your comments, uh, could potentially do three things. One is. It could provide a method for, uh, doing something similar to J R C where substandard housing could. Be kept and improved, uh, but also that we would still look at. Uh, some reduction in the existing units because while I, I understand Amy's point. About the disaggregated vacancy rate, the aggregate vacancy rate still shows we have too much housing. So I. I think consistent with the plan, that would have to be part of it. But then what you're suggesting also. Is to look at what kind of impact any kind of mitigation by improving some housing and building the new housing. Would have as an effect on landlords and owners of properties now that their rents would be even less and they would have less money to invest. And I, I used to be a landlord with one house in the city of Jamestown and. One of the reasons I got out of it, it was my original house was I, I couldn't make any money off of it if I, if I did it properly. Keeping it up to code, paying my taxes, uh, I was lucky every year when I broke even. And I finally said, well, this is kind of crazy. So it, it drove a responsible landlord out and, and. I'm not saying that there aren't irresponsible landlords, clearly there are. But there's also a lot of responsible landlords that you don't want to force them out because that could make things even worse. So. I think that impact that you're discussing, I would suggest should also be part of the mitigation plan. So this might be a unique, a unique mitigation plan.
I feel like, I, I feel like, I just want to say, maybe this is a risk to say this. But I, I feel totally confident in the members here who will be part of that task force to develop the, the mitigation plan to do a wonderful job. But I don't think that it should be the responsibility of the gateway laws to solve. The entire affordable housing problem in the city of Jamestown and, you know, some of these. Side issues of how difficult it might be for a landlord to make this, make this work. I mean, I think that. To, I, I just, I, I just want to sort of state that, I guess, which is. Every problem in every unit to make sure that people have all the funds and resources to provide affordable housing. You know, it just seems to me that you're raising the bar by having these units that are very quality. And it is hard for the pe- for the people who won't be able to live there. Cause I can tell you, I bet these will be filled up very, very quickly. Because people want to live in better conditions than they're living now.
And I appreciate that, Amy. I don't think, i- if it sounds like we're trying to make the mitigation plan more. Difficult, uh, for some, and I know you're not saying this for some nefarious reason, it just seems to me that, um. We're not, I'm not certainly asking the project sponsor to solve all of our issues. However. Every time we do have a project that comes before us with housing. Uh, has to address these issues, at least to the extent of talking about them, uh, if not doing something about them. And I, I don't know where, if we're raising the bar, but we would be with this project, which I think could ultimately be really helpful down the road. Uh, setting a standard that I think is achievable if we all sit down and work together on it, that then we would say to other developers, well. Look at what Gateway did. You should be able to do the same thing.
Well, and I agree. I mean, I think the collateral benefit is, is just shedding light on. The issue of affordable quality housing in our community, like that's.
The other advantage is if for some reason someone decides to take the project to court. Uh, which could happen, somebody out there trying to stop it, we can point to. A mitigation plan that is broader than most people would think of. That complies with the plan, complies with the commission. So I, I, again, I don't think we're trying to set up an impossible task. Uh, we're just, you know, going back to John's comments, just making some suggestions of what we should address. So that becomes the gold standard, um, for mitigation plans.
If I may, uh, I, I just want to briefly build on what, uh, Amy said and what Greg Rab said and what John has been saying. We can't solve all problems. We, we, we think we're solving a lot of big problems. In terms of like incidental benefit, let's not overlook the fact that, you know, in addition to a direct mitigation plan. The, the project itself is a pretty big mitigation plan. I mean, that's what makes the funding package possible. But leaving aside all that stuff that we've talked about over and over again, you know, the, the real property taxes that this will throw off. Uh, the funding of Saint Susan's operations and the fact that. There's going to be a corresponding benefit when you take people and you put them in a roof over their head. And when you provide them with services, I mean, the reason that makes sense from a holistic perspective. Is because there are ancillary economic benefits that, uh, the city will enjoy. Uh, we don't, you know, there are situations in other cities, uh, and in other situations where, you know, you, you're an applicant and you submit an application and. You know, there, there comes a time where you feel like you're paying to play. Uh, this is not that kind of a situation. But we don't want it to devolve beyond what is fair and, and, and reasonable. Uh, we, we like, uh, all of the options that you're talking about. We're definitely willing to, we, and want to and are eager to start putting that together in the context of a resubmitted application. Uh, but we don't want to lose sight of the fact that, you know, this, the, the, there's sometimes a very fine line between dealing with economic. Competition issues and issues that are environmental in nature and certainly urban. Uh, planning and revitalization and blight are environmental considerations. And that's why we're eager to start. Getting into that. But when it comes to overall governance. Um, we're, we don't want to become the city of James and not qualified to do so. But we do want to do what's reasonable and realistic within our, our ability and the resources that we have. So. Um, I, I just wanted to kind of reinforce the fact that. There's an awful lot of benefits that this project offers. It just can't. Can't resolve the entire housing situation in the city of Jamestown.
And, and Steve, nobody's asking you to do that. Uh, but this is. If the project goes forward, it's certainly a piece of the puzzle. And it's a project that is, um, of a scope that, you know, we haven't done in a very long time. So, um. I, all I was attempting to do. Try to find a way to get to the point where the commission could give, oh, go ahead. To the third application because the mitigation plan is so good and so well thought out without making it an impossible project. And then collecting comments from commission members of what they might like to see because keep in mind. It'll have to come back to us and I don't want you to go through that and then come back to us when we turn you down. So, um. You know, if people want to put stuff out there that they think should be in there, um, I think we should take a serious look at that and at least. Talk about it so that, uh, it shows that we took that into consideration without asking you guys to solve all of our problems. Because, you know, even when John was talking about what J R C did, and I'm a member of that board, so, um. You know, you can take this with a grain of salt. We have had some successes in a lot of neighborhoods, but those are in the more middle and upper neighborhoods that were on the edge and we were afraid that we're going to fall over. And in, and, and in the interest of disclosure, I, I took advantage of the project with my own house here on Lakeview Avenue because I thought, well, why not? Um, although I waited till I was off city council before I did that deliberately. So, uh, that's a piece of the puzzle. This is a piece of the puzzle. There's just, you know, little pieces that. Could take incremental steps to ultimately making things better for everyone who lives here. So. My thought was this is the direction we should move in. And then I would be on the meetings and since Elliot said we could have two other people, I would. happily take volunteers. You don't have to volunteer right this second. But I I think the closer commission is involved in this mitigation plan develop development, the better. It's much more likely to have a successful outcome.
I would agree with you, Greg, on that one. And I think it's important, too, to understand that there's been a lot of changes that have gone on in the city, and we're still in sometimes talking what we were seeing many, many years ago. And it's really gone very much downhill. We've got a lot of difficulties that have come along with changes in population and what the population is. We really need to go forward, and I think Crystal's a good one to lead it to really looking at this question of housing in the city in a much bigger way. And I really do tend to think that it would be good for members of the planning commission to be working along with that and contributing as much as possible. I think for those of us who have been around for a long time, and I think I'm older than you are, Greg, so I don't feel so bad for what you about you for what you said earlier. But we've got a lot of work to do. We've really gone downhill over the last, let's say, fifty years since I was working on the Brooklyn Square Urban Renewal Project. A lot, we all tried to go forward, and in a lot of ways, we've gone the other way. And we need to get at it. So I think the points made by several people here are are very positive in trying to move forward and looking at the city with maybe new eyes. So.
Thanks, Jeff. I I think you are older than me, but it's good to have somebody be older than me because I, although most of the time as I get older, that's getting harder and harder to do.
Well, I hit eighty last December, and I can hardly.
Well, I I'm really glad you're here, not just because of your age, but because of the knowledge you have for so many years of all these projects, so.
At least you do learn a lot. You learn about a lot of things that you did wrong.
Yeah.
You got to do better.
You learn what math can do.
Things going in a direction over a long period of time. And, you know, you know, you're thinking about it, but a lot of others aren't.
Right.
Well, no, it's good.
So again, I'm looking at the time and and appreciate all of your commitment. But I tried to summarize the direction that I think we should go in. And it's not that I don't have an interest in everybody else's opinion, but I'm particularly interested in the commission's opinion because we're the ones who are ultimately going to have to make that decision, which I suppose could be done at a May meeting. It depends on how fast we can move on this. But I just attempted to summarize what I think we need to do if we're going to make this move forward. So I, again, I just throw it out there for any last comments.
I support your thinking.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I agree with you, Greg.
Thanks, Mike.
So I did have a comment about the the impact of the project on on the market. I I think that has been quantified by the market study that we are going to take, we are going to have an impact on the market, and that's four percent or less of the available people that could live here. We need to capture them. They won't be available for other landlords. So we're only taking four percent, and that's including homeless units. When they do the market study, they can't take into account that we've got support service dollars to serve homeless people. So the market study says four percent. It's actually going to be less than that because half of our units are for homeless people, and and the market study can't take that into account.
Well, the information that you've collected and what's in that study is something that is would be the value to the planning commission.
Yes.
Readily available to look at.
Yeah, we can. We can take a look at that while we're trying to craft the mitigation plan, of course.
So Chairman Rab, I I'm wondering if this is a situation where in order to effectuate this basic approach, given that there's an opportunity to have three Jamestown Planning Commission members and the fact that I I think we've already sort of made a lot of progress in defining what the mitigation plan would look like. Would it make sense to schedule maybe a Zoom meeting or a conference call among a group to be determined by you? Tell us when it's convenient for you from a scheduling perspective so that, you know, maybe within the next week or so, we can have a conversation in which we all sort of come to a collective agreement about the ingredients of the plan. And then it'll be up to me and my clients and their partners to reduce it to writing, maybe in some sort of a conceptual form. And then if that's, you know, if we could work it out in that kind of an informal way, we'd then be in a pretty good position to resubmit something that will be of no surprise to anybody.
That would be fine with me. I just got to get Elliot's opinion because he said I could have a, I could call a special meeting of myself and two commission members. But to do, is there any kind of notice requirement with that, or can I just do it, or?
Yeah, I don't think it's limited to two to two members. That one wrong. Let me pull that up just.
Yeah, but then isn't there a potential of getting in violation of the open meetings law if we don't do it right?
Elliot, by the way, I, one of my partners is a complete and total municipal law nerd. He, you know, I I'd be more than willing to set up a conference call or discussion with you and my partner Chip Greco, who's a municipal attorney for a number of different towns and and villages, and I'm sure he's got this all figured out.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to research the open meetings law issue and see.
Well, it just says every time I get into these discussions, you know, on open meetings law, it's almost just assume you're going to be violating unless you can explain.
I I mentioned that Elliot because, you know, there's an executive order on it. Yeah.
I I do, I always go, oh.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, I always go by Marie Caruba's rule that if there's more than five council members in the in the room, then it's it's an object of the open.
You can't have a quorum.
You don't have nine members of the commission, so.
However, you want to, you know.
I I like the idea of three, because I don't want to consume. But if somebody really wanted to be on it, we got up to four, I wouldn't object. It just, I guess I'm looking for volunteers too right now. You you can tell me right now or you can tell me later. But I like the idea of trying to get this meeting set up ASAP without violating the law. And then, because certainly Crystal would need to be there. My schedule right now, except for B P U meetings, which tend to be late afternoon, this time sometimes is bad. But, you know, as long as I'm teaching remotely on a very flexible schedule, I could, I could meet at any time. But that may not be the case of anybody else who wants to be a part of this.
Being self-employed, I'm somewhat flexible.
So Jeff, are you volunteering?
Yeah.
Great.
I'll I'll volunteer if anyone.
And Mike, what's your schedule like?
Anytime after three.
Okay, well, I can do after three as long as it doesn't interfere with the B P U. And Jeff, you're pretty flexible with after three?
Yes.
And then Crystal, what about your schedule?
I'll make it work.
Oh, yikes. Wasn't expecting that. Well, I, you know, if if we, I don't know if you, do you want to try to, what's today, Tuesday? That's the only problem with this. I never know what day it is.
It's Tuesday, yeah.
Okay, thank you. You know, depends how fast we want to do this. Do you want to try to do it Thursday, or is that too soon?
No, that's fine.
That's, yeah.
Well, then why don't we go for three thirty on Thursday?
Okay.
It'd be easy to remember because we meet at three thirty. So then, Crystal, are you able to get a Zoom meeting set up for us?
Yep, I can do that.
All right. Does that sound acceptable to everybody?
Yeah. I have to put on my calendar to shave that morning.
Well, that's the only advantage of working remotely. I probably can't, my hair is thinning, but it's kind of messy, but should have worn a baseball cap, but I didn't want to be disrespectful. So. All right, well, is there anything else to come before the commission?
That would be it.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Could I have a second, please?
Oh, second.
Moved by Jeff and seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
I thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned. I look forward to what we get to do next. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.